We're now in a public hearing for an additional appropriation from the ARK Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Grant Fund for an additional appropriation of $60,000 for park improvement projects. We'll hear from the public, anyone present from the public who wishes to speak for or against the additional appropriation. Hearing no one and seeing no one, this concludes the public hearing for this purpose.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Make a motion to open our city council meeting.
Well, we don't.
We need to get one on, don't we?
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting to order.
Thank you.
First, we have to understand that joining the study.
I'm trying to be here.
My presence is to the life of United States of America and in every public service stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, could you please do roll call?
Craig Koshon.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Follencamp.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Lyne Surt.
Here.
Okay, was everyone given a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting held on October 17?
Make a motion, accept them as email.
Second.
Motion is second, on favor?
Aye.
Hold the same. Okay. We have some guests here from the redevelopment commission, we'll allow them to.
Don't we need to finish what we're doing?
Do we have to do that first?
Yeah. We opened the public hearing, now we got to act on it, on the resolution.
It can be done anytime in the meeting, rather.
We will do it, we'll do it in the meeting, we can right, we can right now, there's no problems.
This is crazy.
We can straight up, I mean, that's not going to hurt nothing.
I just thought we had other stuff later. Right?
It's part of the council meeting that the resolution would be approved, it doesn't necessarily matter the order in which it's done.
All right, we'll go ahead and act on that since we just had the public hearing.
Yeah.
We need a motion to make matter record the publication.
Yeah, we have to, thank you.
So, sorry guys, one second. Motion is second to make the publication of advertising.
Was it Craig first?
Yeah, I seconded it.
On favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Okay, so now. We have a resolution for the appropriation of the ARK funds for park improvements?
We have, yeah, we have, I see a motion for resolution 2023-19.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to introduce resolution 2023-19 by short title only.
Second. Motion is second, on favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Resolution 2023-19, additional appropriation from the ARK Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Grant Fund towards park improvement project.
Make, excuse me, make a motion to pass resolution 2023-19.
Second.
Motion is second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Okay, now we can move on to the redevelopment commission.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'd like to open with just giving a quick review of what the redevelopment commission has done over the last year, starting in July. We had received earlier in the year, we've received a offer on one of the two properties that we own in the industrial park. The offer came in very, very low, unfortunately, we couldn't do anything with the offer until after we had the property all appraised and so forth. The properties were appraised and the company, which was Allied Commercial, said, no, those are too high, so we did lower our bid, and it's all laid out in here. They ultimately determined that they did not want to go with the purchase of the property at that time. It had taken almost five months from beginning to the final offer bid, because we had to go through appraisals and everything for the property. So.
Did they see no, because of the price or the timeframe?
Probably both, probably both, I mean, and the company, you know, it was just a company that was just moving to a larger location, they were not adding more jobs, and we're not bringing in more people. So, we didn't feel that to give them a low ball, their low offer an opportunity at this point, if they were bringing in jobs, additional jobs, we would have probably negotiated on the little department. We also started progress on the 13th Street project, and with phases one and two. Over time, that became the area of Bowman Street by in front of Vixler's Insurance, where we had put in new signalization with the state, worked with the state on that, and put in the new sidewalk, so that people did not have to walk in the street to get up, to cross the street there. And it also had an island built in front of the Richards Restaurant, also, so people could cross over there safely, there was nothing there in the first place, if they'd walked in, they'd been walking on that. Down the drain, so we made that safer. The work ended wrapped up in December, with most all of the stuff done. And then, moving into January of 2023, we had a new board. The commission turned the meeting over to Ann for reorganization. I was nominated as president, Ann Max Miller's vice president, Jeremy Freed was secretary, and it was noted by statute that court treasurer, Phyllis, had to be the treasurer of the commission. And then other members, voting members, were Craig Russett and new member Jason Byrd, and then Tim Ellerding, a non-voting member appointed through the school board, and Barb Angle, which continues our reporting secretary. I got your name right this time?
I didn't screw up the meeting, right?
In March, Main Street Design Committee, they come to us, request money for their signage program, and we agreed to help fund that. And then, moving into June of this year, we had in our June meeting a conception of what some apartments in the river could be, how it could be worked out. And then in July, we discussed and have ultimately entered into an MOU with the city, the redevelopment commission, and the Housing Resource Hub to help move forward with this program, and the redevelopment commission totally paid for that part of the program at this time. So, any questions, I know I've kind of skimmed over it, but that's why we put it in writing.
I do have a question, has there been any additional conversation along 13th Street and that plan, overall plan?
Yes.
And sidewalks and so forth?
As a matter of fact, December meeting, Jeremy is going to be there with us. We're going to be discussing the pathway from 13th, or from Bowman Street out to the park, and getting that part of the next project in, and whatever we need to do with that, with the intersection as far as possible signalization and so.
Okay, what about further north, what kind of conversation?
That's still in the plan. You know, we're doing this a little bit at a time because it's a multimillion dollar project. And one of the other things we looked at, the Washington Street crossing, with the trucks coming around that corner, we were thinking that that's would be creating more of a hazard than if we redesigned that intersection. We were looking at the possibility of going across the street, across Washington Street, and then coming to cross for that 40 and over. That may or may not work, and the other possibility that we talked about, and I make mention in here about we discussed McKean's property as a blighted area, building a, looking into a skywalk from next to where the manor is, over, over 13th Street, being the safest alternative. But the cost on that is a whole lot more money than what we got at this point.
That seems to be noticed too, when 224 was shut down, and truckers were urged to use Washington Street, truckers are still using Washington Street.
Right, that's why we're.
Because they've already, they've seen where that can be an advantage going straight across US 27.
Yeah, we sort of prioritized, you know, 13th Street, you know, the Bowman Street intersection first, and then getting that sidewalk down to the Walmart and that intersection. That, the next step really is, how are we going to get trap, or pedestrian traffic safely across 27 over to Hannah Mountain? Or, you know, Red Mark or, yeah, but, and yeah, as Ron alluded to, I mean, we've looked, we've talked about going underground, we talked about going overground, we talked about various, you know, safety zones and things like that, you know, hatched, you know, whatever. I mean, we, sort of the jury's still out as far as what direction we really feel is going to be the best way to address the pedestrian area, but we always felt that Bowman was the worst situation, that was really sort of priority one, and then getting the pedestrians from the Bowman area and those apartments down to the Walmart was number two. Next one here is the, is the park, so you'll probably see us talking about that a lot more this year, you know, this and next year, as far as the next phase, 13th Street, but you know, you saw that master plan we created here a few years ago, and it's really, it's, it's a long-term plan for us.
Right.
But it's a great, great question.
I think it needs to be regenerated too for the public, because I think some public have forgotten about that.
Yeah, it's really a point, it's really a point. So, I'll go ahead and address my portion of the report, you know, you've got the report in front of you here. Just going to really do some highlights, you see I've outlined, you know, who the membership is, and Ron did that already. As of 9/5/23, we did have a fund balance of $323,622.57, but our cash balance as of that date was $628,542.54. We anticipate in 2024, the TIP revenue that we'll be receiving is approximately $242,000. One of the things that we have to do with the redevelopment commission by law is basically show what the potential impact of that could be to the other taxing units. So you're going to see the listing below of all the various taxing units that apply to our area, whether it's Adams County, the city, the library, solid ways, North Adams, or the township, and you can see that down, those are approximations, those are not, I will not sit here and tell you that's exactly what it's going to be, but it's getting you in the ballpark, and by law, that's what we have to do, to get you in the ballpark of what's the approximate impact, and so. But they are based upon reality, based upon what's going on currently, you know, with the whole taxing situation, so. Last year, we had a $360,000 budget, you can see how we applied that budget, whether it's in career tech ed and part of participation with Belmont High School, the Bowman Street, US 27 renovations of $150,000, you know, professional service operations, capital, other capital projects, and so that's how we allocated that money for 2023. And we, and then I show some additional TIP revenues there. So, wow, looking forward to 2024, which is on the backside. I tried to show you the eight primary areas that redevelopment adopted several years ago, those are the eight primary areas that we always try to look at, whether it's blighted, underutilized land, barriers to development, urban renewal and some of them there, others there. Of those, we really talked about what do we want to target for 2024 as a redevelopment commission. We really said there's really three things we really want to target here in 2024. One is still the renewal, which is the Second Street project, we continue to be dedicated to the Second Street project, and it's a great participation with the city of Decatur and everything as far as that, and then of course, the 13th Street project, which we alluded to. Also, the issue of growing population, and you know, we've had some discussions, and I know the city's actively working on the concept of some type of multifamily housing, you know, complex, whether, you know, whether it's, if I'm pointing the right way, yeah, whether it's over here on the river, or whatever it might be, but redevelopment has made it very clear that we're very, very interested in participating in that process, and so those, that's one of the three goals, and the third goal is the continuance of job creation and skill development. We've developed a really nice partnership with Belmont High School, and we anticipate continuing to do that for a few years, Belmont's had some really great assets in the overall program, you know, because of the participation with redevelopment. So, when you look at our 2024 budget, you see it's about a $450,000 budget that we have, you know, and you can see how we spell it out, whether it's career tech, Second Street, capital projects, which would be 13th Street and the apartments, or the multifamily residential is probably a better way to say that than apartments. And then of course, you know, the various operations costs that we have, so. It's really been a great past couple of years here, we had to pay 2024 being equally as exciting, especially with some of the initiatives that the city's undertaking, and how we can support, so. Yeah, that's what we've got going on in the coming.
And we meet the first Wednesday of every month at 5:00 here at City Hall. Anybody who's invited to attend is open to the public. Like to have you all come once in a while too. Any questions?
So, the fund balance, that's basically what you had budgeted remaining for the year?
The 323.
Yeah, and then the cash balance.
323.
Yeah.
I'm going to tell you what, I'm going to defer to somebody multiple times wiser than me, Phyllis.
I mean, he had this thing here as a fund balance as of 9/5 versus a cash balance.
That's the budgeted balance, and this is the cash.
This cash is just on, okay.
I was going to say that, yeah, that's it, yeah, there you go.
That's what I assumed, I was just, I was just curious. And then, so we got in this housing study that we signed a memorandum of understanding, but isn't the redevelopment taking the lead on that, or is the city?
So, we.
We signed with the hub, I understand that, but who's?
We formed a steering committee, and so as of right now, Tim, Jeremy Freed, and Jason Byrd are on it from the redevelopment commission. Scott Murray's representing the city. Phil Summers is representing the BGA, Craig Kershaw's representing the Board of Works, Ann is on it, Jamie's representing Main Street, and Alex Haynesworth is representing the Parks Board. So it's made up of people from all different boards.
And they're working with the hub?
We have a meeting Monday, virtual meeting Monday is our first meeting with the hub, yep.
Hope they're working together on it, you know.
I was just curious how it was working.
Yeah.
I welcome hearing that, and I'll pick on them, we've heard the term McKeens and Blight. It's been 20 years, it's still McKeens and Blight, and they own multiple properties on 13th Street, as well as 8th Street they did own, so I appreciate that you're continuing to look into those issues for redevelopment.
Nothing concrete or anything on it yet, we're just starting to conversation on that. We looked at a couple, three different options for this, especially the property closer to the park there. It is a very narrow lot, so there are some limitations as far as commercial development, but, but yeah, as Ron alluded to, it could become a nice entry point, whatever, introduction to the park, I don't know, I think there's some options there.
The whole subway area to.
And it's 13th Street, yeah.
I agree, and I'll tell you one thing, from the Mayor's Youth Council, that's one thing that they put on paper, I asked them to list things that they like about Decatur, see the things that need to be improved, and those lots were pointed out by our high school kids.
We're going back about 10 years, we called Mr. McKean before, I believe it was the Board of Works, about his property on 8th Street. He said at the time, how do you know those cars aren't operable? I said, Mr. McKean, I rode my bike by when I was eight. Yeah, it's frustrating, but people need to take better care of their own properties.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Well, while we're on the redevelopment commission, the city council has two appointments to the redevelopment commission. Currently, right now, it is Craig Russett and Jason Byrd. So these are one-year terms.
I'll make a motion to approve those two for the next year, 2024.
Second.
Motion is second, any more discussion on appointments? On favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Okay. Jamie. I'm waiting to hear from one person, yeah, I'm reappointing all of them except for one asked to leave, and I'm reappointing, but I got to make sure, I'm waiting, I'm waiting to see if this person's allowed to. You just went by the 15th, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I have an event application to start with, it's for Madison Street Plaza, and it's for next Saturday, November 18. It's the annual Christmas tree lighting, so they're doing it a little bit different this year, it'll start at 5:00 PM on the plaza, and they're going to have tables set up for kids to walk by and get different gifts from, and then they'll be able to visit with Santa, and then they will cross the street for the Christmas tree lighting. So they are asking for Second Street to be closed, just between Madison Street and Court Street during that timing, but again, they'll be setting up around 3:30, and it's 5 to 8 is the event timing next Saturday, November 18.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion is second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Do you want to give an update on the facade program?
And then I also have the facade program, so after some discussion, it was decided that, you know, we've had the facade program downtown for over 10 years, it's done great things for the downtown, but let's look at expanding it to be all up in the city of Decatur. So I've had different discussions with Main Street, and including the redevelopment commission and all that as well. So, basically what it's going to look like this year, as long as everything is approved, is it'll be a Main Street thing still, that the Main Street runs, all applications will come to me, and then the deciding committee is the Main Street Design Committee, as well as two members from the redevelopment commission. And then the award cap is $10,000 in total, and there is $50,000 in the budget, so that's how much will be awarded. And then, to qualify, the business must operate primarily in Decatur and make contributions to the Decatur economy. It has to be independently owned and operated, and is not dominant and is sealed on a national basis, and employs less than 50 people. And then also, they need to be either a Decatur Main Street member or located downtown. And that is what will allow them to be able to participate, so it's small businesses, either located downtown or within the city limits of Decatur. And we do have two members from the redevelopment commission that have agreed to be part of the deciding committee. If everything does get approved, we will have a required meeting for anybody that wants to have the funding Thursday, December 7. You have any questions?
I guess I have a question, maybe, do you, like, a chamber member and a Main Street member is different? Is Main Street a different fee, I mean?
They're, they're two.
Two separate organizations, but there's a memorandum of understanding.
We.
Where we house in the same office.
What is a Main Street fee to be?
$50.
A year?
60, and if you're dual, it's 50.
Yeah.
Who are the development, redevelopment commission? Do you have it already?
Yeah, it's Jeremy Freed and Jason Byrd.
Okay, I knew it was Jason Byrd, yeah.
Okay. Well, the whole idea was to stretch it out, and you figure out the details, and it sounds like, yeah, so. Well, the goal was, is that they've already got a map, why reinvent the, you know?
We did change some of the grading of it, and I did have conversations with Ann about how that should look. So, at that meeting, December 7, everybody that attends will get the application that shows exactly what their point system will be graded on.
Are there still design requirements?
There's, yes, I mean, it has to meet city code, but as far as different materials or anything like that, as long as it's meeting city code, then it's.
It's following the same outline as what Main Street did with our downtown facade program.
I just have because we have the one, they've used a product that shouldn't be used, and that's always bothered me, they've paid money for that.
Yeah.
So as long as that doesn't happen.
Yeah, and so all of these applications will, before they get full approval, they'll go through the office over there.
And then we, council would approve it?
So after, yes, after the deciding committee approves, the Main Street board will approve, and then I'll bring it to council to approve, but Kurt in his office will look through everything too.
So this is for 2024 currently?
Yeah, for next year.
And they would just have to be a member for the Main Street for, so if somebody was interested, not a month, they can join in?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve, you, application process.
Motion is second, any more discussion on the facade program? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Jamie, thank, because there was a lot.
So, I'll put it out on our social media, and the Chamber and Main Street will email it out to everybody, and then we'll also get it through the papers.
I want to thank you, Jamie, because you put a lot of effort into this and communicating with all of the different groups, so, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, and I think there were some legal terms in there too, so I'm guessing Ann was probably involved too.
Yeah, thank you, Ann.
No, thank you guys for cleaning that up. Making it make sense.
We should also thank Main Street, because they took initiative, and people like to come to our downtown because of the work they do.
For sure, for sure.
Now they're going to make the rest of it available to me.
That's right. I have an event forum too, tomorrow night, the Belmont Wrestling Team's having their, we think so, depending on the weather, for sure, they're going to have their wrestle-offs on the plaza like they did last year. I have an event forum, I have the proof of insurance. There are no road closures or anything like that, so, just need to get approval, I have the signatures from the department heads.
So move.
Get back in.
Motion is second, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and for the media, that's, the wrestle-offs are going to start, I think, at 4:15 tomorrow on the plaza. Depending on the weather, but I believe right now that's what they're going to stick with. I would bet it's the only preseason wrestling outdoors in the state of Indiana.
It was pretty cool last year.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Okay, now we have a bunch of ordinance. So we have a third reading of the ordinance which establishes the Merritt Center Ready Grant Fund. So we have a third reading of the ordinance which establishes the Merritt Center Ready Grant Fund.
That's 2023-19. I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2023-19 on its third reading by short title only.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Ordinance number 2023-19, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes the Merritt Center Ready Grant Fund, which authorizes the deposit and use of grant-related funds for the purpose of administration of funds towards Merritt Center improvement.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-19 on its third reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote?
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Sird?
Yes.
Sign.
While we're signing, next we have third reading of ordinance which establishes a 138 North Second Street Ready Grant Fund.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2023-20 on its third reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Ordinance number 2023-20, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes a 138 North Second Street Ready Grant Fund, which authorizes the deposit and use of grant-related funds for the purpose of administration of funds towards 138 North Second Street building improvement.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-20 on its third reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote?
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Sird?
Yes.
Hey.
We...
I got a question on that, Dan, though. How fast does that ready grant money have to be sent? Is there stipulations in the grant when it comes?
Yeah, within, I believe it's 24 months after.
24 months? We have zero. Award already came through then?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we have a third reading of an amended ordinance establishing Paul's and Play Dog Park.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2023-21 on its third reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Ordinance number 2023-21, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, amending Chapter 94 of the City Code of Ordinances of 2015, as supplemented to add Section 94.50, establishing a dedicated dog park in the city of Decatur.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-21 on its first reading.
Motion is second. Roll call vote?
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Sird?
Yes. Okay. We need to introduce an ordinance for the State of Decatur's Capital Improvement Plan from revenues collected from lit economic development income tax distributions for the years 2024 and 2025.
Hey, I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2023-22 on its first reading by short title only.
Second.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Ordinance number 2023-22, a capital improvement plan for the city of Decatur for calendar years 2024 and 2025.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-22 on its first reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote?
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Sird?
Yes. Make a motion to place ordinance 2023-22 on its second reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Ordinance number 2023-22, a capital improvement plan for the city of Decatur for calendar years 2024 and 2025.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-22 on its second reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote?
Craig Koschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Sird?
Yes. Make a motion to table ordinance 2023-22 for the next council meeting, November 21st.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay. Kevin Girber.
A second page for him.
I think we're gonna talk about the golf cart and UTV ordinances? Or the registration process, I guess.
Ian and I have met, and this is cleaning up the provage of the ordinance. For the golf carts, the sticker is to be placed on the back of the golf cart. For the UTVs, the sticker, it says ordinance, so the sticker is to be placed on some of the UTV. UTV registrations are not charged for those. They just have to bring them up. We verify the people, the things that are required on, we give them a sticker. Golf carts, there's a more lengthy registration process, and those get repeated every year. I want to streamline the process, and I brought these examples.
There's a lot of golf carts, a lot of UTVs.
What were the numbers this year?
Currently, we have 344 golf carts that are registered with us, and 127 UTVs.
Wow.
People like their golf carts.
That's a bottom annual inspection.
Yes.
I guess I don't wanna jump the gun here, but I kinda read through the ordinance. Are you, did you say that they can re-register online now? You don't have to do the annual inspection for the golf cart? Are you not changing that in there?
Uh, no, not on the front. We don't, we don't have that capability.
Or can they just buy a sticker? I mean, if it's been registered?
The objective would be to have an initial inspection when a cart is initially registered with the city, so long as the owner, the cart and the equipment on it is the same for a renewal process. It is filling out the application, paying the $30 registration fee. You would get a renewal sticker, and the subsequent annual inspections would be renewed.
You just go up there and buy a sticker.
You can just go up there, bring your application in, and get your renewal sticker.
Kinda like how we use, how we renew our vehicle registrations.
Right, that way a cop never has, you have to pull a guy off. I always felt bad driving up to the station, pulling a cop off the road to come check the golf cart when it's been checked for the last three years.
Mm-huh.
And then the current sticker system is, it's what was put together when it all was put in place however many years ago. There's different colored stickers for different years, the numbers. When you come up this year, you get a number. The next year, your number's gonna be totally different. This is, your registration number's gonna stay the same. It's like on this sticker, this 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, but it's always your, that'll be your number for as long as you own it.
Perfect. Then you check the insurance, make sure they're insured then? Okay. Sounds smart to me.
And then in Florida, you know, the person, they don't follow, they take the windshield off, or they drop their insurance, or they remove the brake light. I mean, if they do any of that, it's on them. It's on them. And there's ordinance in place for us to enforce that if needed.
Okay.
I do have one question. I know it's late to the game, but I feel there's a better spot for a golf cart sticker than the, than the front. I just feel, I like where they're at on the back right now. All of our license plates are on the back. I feel if we put them on the front of windshield, if people have fold-down windshields, they're gonna cover them. People break windshields. I know people have got a new windshield every year. They just crack and break. I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be easier just to keep them on the back bumper or the back fender?
The problems we've seen with them being on the back are, one, the buffers are curved, and so the stickers a lot of times bubble, and they're not put on perfectly. And then people put them all over. They're on the slow-moving vehicle triangle sign. I've seen them up on the canopy. Some people make, have a special little bracket. Trying to think of someplace that was flat and universal to both devices that are...
Would it change, let me ask, would it change the reflectability of the slow-moving vehicle sign if they all went on the bottom of those?
I don't, I don't think so, but the UTVs are not, they're not required in an SMB. And we could always say the left driver side of the body of the...
Right. And I'm not trying to change your ordinance. I just, when people start talking about the windshield, and like, people change them all the time, they crack and break, they fold them down so it's easier to cover them up.
What happens if you lose, like, is the number printed on the sticker?
Yes.
Say I lose my sticker, then what? I get a different number? I come in and pay another?
Yeah, we'll have to do a replacement fee for that, for that number. It would be my only, I think would be the only option for it. The UTVs are not, we can't charge for those. It's concerning for the state statute.
Why was it decided UTV would be in the front?
I'm sorry?
Why was it decided the UTV would be in the front?
I, I don't know. That was prior to me. This is how the ordinance was written.
And the whole theory behind a sticker would allow it to be...
A lot of it's legal, street legal.
Come straight up, and they don't have fenders to wrap around.
It's not a moneymaker.
UTVs.
Okay.
They're open.
Why do we have a sticker period?
For the UTVs?
For either of them?
Well, for the...
To make sure they're street legal?
To make sure they're safe. Yeah, they're up to code.
The golf carts would be to make sure they have everything required under the ordinance. That's turn signal, headlights, brake lights, slow-moving triangle, windshield, insurance.
One? Vehicle?
Factory seating. The UTVs, I think it's to, if you just said any UTV registered with Indiana could be on the streets, then that's open-ended, four-wheelers and vehicles out.
And the reason we made them come get a sticker is because then they have to, they get our, list the rules, and then they gotta know to follow our rules. We can't charge them, but it was a way to get them to follow the rules.
Just questions. I mean, I like that you're trying to streamline it to not be putting extra burden on your officers. That's around golf carts.
It eases the, I guess annoyance, if you call it that, to the public, where they have to bring their golf cart up there, wait, I mean, and it's, everything's the exact same as last year. They can just come in, they can get their yearly renewal sticker, and they can go and put it on there.
That, I mean, that makes sense.
Are you gonna say something? What Dan was referring to, put on the windshield, that's the single most replaceable and replaced thing on the entire golf cart. Might be the only problem. And it could be moved to the front, uh, what do you call it? The body of the golf cart. I'm just trying to think of a place that was flat, not curved.
Right.
Because of, because the blue part of the main body, that sticker's gonna be intended to stay there for, you know?
Six years.
So are you looking for stickers when you drive by golf carts, if they're registered?
I'm not. Uh, I would like to think the officers are. The current system, I can't tell you what color 2023 is, because it's, it's cycled through. There's brown, green, blue, one other color. I don't remember what those years are tied to. That was just the system that was created by Chief Kessler when they tried to, when they put all this together. This, I mean, there'll be a year sticker on it.
Yeah. You can put it on the driver's side, like, front or the back wheel. If you drive by, you can see it. It's a flat space, and it's out of everybody's way.
Currently, for UTVs, it's proposed that in the event the UTV does not have a windshield, the permit or sticker would be displayed on the lower driver's side of the front of the UTV, so.
I make the most of it, it's visible to acting officers.
Just stay consistent with both of them.
That's, that's the object, that's the objective, is to have a degree of consistency. So it would essentially be on the, the proposed method would be to use the lower left side of the windshield. But if there's not a windshield, then it would be on the lower driver's side of the body, of the body of the UTV or cart.
The golf cart, and do you consider which that?
Either or, or windshield first, then the side of the body.
I think we need to stay away from windshield.
Just stay away from the windshield.
Mine's cracked right there in the lower left-hand side of the back. That's where the sticker'd have to go.
I identified the windshield on two cars. I mean, it's...
I'm sitting on the lower left-hand side of the front of the driver.
They fold down the slam sometimes on accident.
Will that work for golf carts?
It just, I mean, they're all different bodies. I mean, different brands, different bodies. Some are more curved in the front, some are more curved in the back. You just, you don't know.
Okay.
That's the thing, you don't know.
Usually on the side, there's a flat enough spot.
Like he said, if you go on the side, there's gonna be a flat spot.
Put it down by the tire, and with like a racing sticker.
So say their aesthetics, do people not want a sticker on their golf cart?
No, I don't care. I just wanna...
Like a put flames on them.
I wanted to see without a license plate frame in the front. I want no plate. Looks better.
I wouldn't put the, I wouldn't put the graphic images on the, although it was me.
The reason, uh, the reason for the graphic images are, we will, when you come in and say you get a golf cart sticker, we're gonna, that open area to the left of that, we will put a hole punch there. And that will just...
I don't see it.
That's the, the...
I'm not following you.
So UTVs, if someone came in, they got their UTV sticker, and then they take it home, put it on their golf cart, it's gonna prevent the fraudulent, potential fraudulent side of it, that the 1 in 100, that would happen. So when you, if they come in and get a UTV sticker, there's gonna be a hole punch that happens on the, on their actual sticker. So that if they didn't take that sticker and they'll put it on a golf cart, the officer's gonna know that was intended for a UTV. Why is it on a golf cart? It's out of their reason for bringing to your security box.
Oh, yeah, because the UTV ones are free.
You would have somebody who would do that.
Someone would do it, at some point.
But it says UTV on it.
On the year sticker, yeah. Again, that's so that if someone doesn't come in and say, "I need a renewal sticker for my UTV", and they take that sticker and they'll put it on their golf cart.
No, I don't think, they don't say UTV on it.
That's what?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But this is where it would go, either one of those.
Punch a hole in the 18.
Right, I think Scott's, um, the year sticker says what it is, too. If it's a UTV, it's on a golf cart, then you know.
It says it right, says the letters. That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
Okay.
Correct. You were thinking along the lines of someone that would not look for a way to bend the rules and to get out and pay the $30 fee. I'm trying to think of a way to...
I was just saying that if you put a sticker that says UTV on a golf cart, it says it.
That's why I didn't know why you needed a hole punch.
For year one. But even then, year one, you're gonna have to affect the cart.
Year one to have a sticker. I don't care what you do, but year one to have a sticker, too. Whatever you wanna do.
In terms of that ordinance, we're back to sticker placement.
I'm fine if the sticker placement was on that. I think uniform is what I would be looking for. be looking for. So it's in the same place on a UTV and on a golf cart, same descent.
There's no difference.
Front driver's side. I, I like, I like Scott's idea better.
What's that?
On the side, on the lower side, by the front of the wheel.
Okay.
But I mean...
Right in front of the back. Because if an officer would walk up, see your ID, do your business.
So on right, on driver's side.
Driver's side.
Back.
Like right here. In this big white space.
It'd have to be a driver's side. I guess you'd just want driver's side.
Right. And I guess part of my thinking is, and then part of my thinking is on the rear, is if someone out there sees somebody do something stupid on a golf cart, and they go past them, they're gonna say, oh, it was a green golf cart. Great. But if they're leaving, they can see the number on it. Because if it's on the front, they're gone, you know, no one's driving towards you.
Oh, you wanna go all the way around the back.
Well, I, I'm just saying, I like the back somehow. I mean, I think that's the whole reason our license plates are on the back of our cars.
This is a long discussion about stickers.
I don't really care.
I guess, law enforcement, the ones gonna have to do it. So what do they want?
Don't play windshield.
The windshield breaking is a very good point. I believe a box teens out on the golf cart. I think along the driver body of the vehicle, along the driver's side of that body would be perfectly fine. It would be seen, it's primarily flat. Um, if you guys want it on the back, that's fine as well. That's what we're, that's the same for the UTV or golf cart, rather than being an office. The golf, golf cart outruns us. Congratulations. UTVs will...
What's your thoughts? I can see this in the paper already. In a very long discussion over stickers.
You've done it already.
We need to act years ago. We have longer discussions than a council meeting over the golf cart ordinance. We want to get a rate increase.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The room was full for that ordinance. There was no one there for rate increases.
Right, right.
I watched you drive a golf course on the city street.
Wait, Scott, what's your thought?
I'd put it on the driver's side of the back. Because that's where officers would go.
They're gonna pass them.
Maybe they're on the rear quarter panel on the driver's side?
I know.
I know. I just need a little bit of direction.
I know. I just know that if we say rear, side, driver's side, people are gonna put it on the back fender. And then there's gonna be some on the side.
Well, don't the officers put them on?
No, no.
Oh, you do?
Well, I mean, if it would be helpful, I will create a diagram.
Somewhere in this zone?
Of how to apply your sticker.
I guess... Somebody just pick a spot and I'll deal with it.
All right. We will, um...
How much you think to do that?
I'll talk to Chief Gober, and we will select a different location than windshield, and, um, come back with an ordinance that adjusts that. Otherwise, it's in good form. It just needs, um...
Passed. I don't think it really needs to be done until warm weather anyways, right? Or, I mean, then at the year would be nice, but...
Let's take a year right now.
Yeah. I guess people probably...
Arriving the first few days of January to register.
And now that we discussed it, the public will hear about it, and they'll have their comments.
Oh, yeah. We'll see some, oh, it's gonna blow up on social media, all their stickers. I already have a college logo right there. Okay, Ann and Chief Gober are gonna talk it out and figure it out by the end of the year, right?
As far as the, would you be okay if I go ahead and get my stickers ordered?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Man, let's just get that little sticker that says twenty twenty-three cart, twenty twenty-four cart.
Right.
Do you have to have anything else?
Well, you have to have a...
You're gonna have the registration or the...
Yeah, I get it, I get it. But I was just saying, maybe we just tie it all into that deal, it'd be done. And it's a little bitty sticker on the cart instead of a great sticker.
You could make this sticker a lot smaller, very easily, if you don't want a giant sticker.
Whatever.
Not our gear. Making things better. But then it's difficult to read for the police office.
If you just made it like this, and you put a number, then you don't have the chance to just go pick up it. I think the goal is just go pick up a little sticker every year. You're never gonna replace this one.
Just like your driver, just like your car.
It also acts like a hall ID number for a boat. If you have a boat, that number stays with that boat, whether Dan owns it or Matt or me. The same thing can happen with this sticker. It can always stay there, and we can change it within our system. It was how the golf cart would stand to open up while it was...
A golf cart.
Okay.
It's the same.
So you need to pass the...
Not yet. Because I gotta...
Change it.
I need to change the sticker location.
Okay. Um, well, I think we, we need to discuss, um, I know we had an executive session a while back about one thirty-eight North Second, and what that transfer thinks Chief Gober, um, what the transfer of ownership looks like between us and economic development, with, um, our use of the back building, whatever. I know we had that discussion, so we couldn't make that decision in an executive session. So in order for this MOU to go forward with economic development, we need to make a decision. So I know some of the things that were brought up were, um, our use of that back area of the building, that being fixed up, whether it was a roof, or a lighting, or garage door. Um, and then also, if something falls through with economic development at any point, that it would be offered to us for a dollar. I mean, those are the things that were brought up. So we just need to make a decision so that economic development can get an MOU, and they can get working on fixing up the building. Any more discussions, or what kind of things you guys like to see, or?
I like what you just said.
Just what you said.
Whatever I remembered.
Lights, uh, roof fixed, make it secure, and then a door, a garage door of some type in it.
And then if they did, economic development would just ban, or whatever would happen, that that property would be returned for a dollar to the city.
Anybody else have any other ideas?
To me, this seems very similar to what happened at the Adams County Community Foundation, in that they're accepting lots of grant money to fix up that building. They did it initially, they did it at a remodel, and then if the Adams County Community Foundation were to go away, it would divert back to the county. This is very similar with the city projects. There's grant monies available to greatly improve this building, and if economic development were to go away, it comes back to the city for a dollar. It's a great use of funds that are out there.
Yep.
And in this understanding, they're gonna fix up, they're gonna put the roof on the garage, put lights on it, nothing on the inside, or?
Inside, so we can see.
Yeah, or like...
There's wiring in there.
Does anything need to be done to the inside shell?
I mean, you could put it in that you want the inside finished, or, I mean, I don't, I haven't been in there in a while.
Well, that back room is, it's...
It was a living corridor at one time, I think.
Yeah, it, it is finished. It's, looks like in the fifties, but...
So it's not an empty space?
No.
Does it need to be emptied out in that understanding, that it's used just for stor, like, it's made into a storage space for the city?
Well, I mean, I think it's our call to do whatever we want with the inside of it, but, yeah.
I mean, that's the goal, is right, to use it for storage?
Yeah, correct.
Right.
Wait, um, would ownership of that back portion be retained with the city, or is that, is the entire building going to EDC with, uh, permanent use for the city? Because that...
I think that makes more sense. With you, it's their building, we can use that portion.
Do they have to, like, lease it for a dollar a year or something like that, or did you just put in there the chip?
No.
Well, I mean, do we even have to?
I mean...
We already own, we already own it. Do we wanna, do we wanna?
We won't own it at the end of the show.
Is there a reason people do like one dollar long-term leases? I mean, obviously, um...
If they own it, they can insure the whole building. We are, we gotta take partial insurance from that.
And they can take, the electric bill can stay on one meter.
Yeah, right. Let's just do that.
Because you don't, I mean, if not, you're on a lot line between two, a building that's connected and...
Yep.
Okay. So Adams County Economic Development will own the building?
Yeah.
And then we're just gonna use the back space?
Yep. With a long-term lease of whatever it is per year, a dollar, or whatever, whatever that looks like.
Because we leased the parking lot for...
Just that for one thirty-eight?
One thirty-eight North Second.
What'd you say about the parking lot?
I mean, that's what we did with that parking lot. I don't think we, we leased out parking space in that parking lot.
Follow you.
We leased it to, to, for the Second Street lot.
Redevelopment Commission owns it and leases those spots too.
They pay us every quarter for that. I think it's three hundred and twenty-four.
I don't, I didn't know what that meant too. Like, I, I agree, put a roof on it and lights in it, but should they make it a storage space in the deal, or?
Yeah, that would be wise. Like, give us a garage door or something to get in there. I mean, damn garage, I mean, I, I can't remember.
I'm betting.
There's like a closed-in room or something inside there, I think.
It'd be nice to walk through that before we...
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's, it's, it's finished. I mean, there's paneling, or walls to, to that. I mean...
Heck, curtains been in there more than anybody.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's...
I mean, do, do you guys wanna take a look at it and make this decision at the next meeting? I just told, I told Quan, we'd try to have this done by the first December, so that he can get moving on his, on the project.
We need to let him go.
He needs to move forward.
Okay, let's do that. Let's take a look at it. We'll go, go through it and look at it real quick. Make a decision next week. How long is it gonna take you to make the memorandum of understanding, Ann? Another two weeks?
Well, I can, I mean, I can work on, I can work on it, and then just add in what needs...
Finishing touches on the interior?
Done with the back space.
Okay.
I don't think we're wanting him to, wanting economic development to refurbish the inside of that.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I didn't know.
The, the, um, the door and the roof and the light.
Door and roof and minimal lighting.
Yeah.
Minimal lighting and then an overhead door.
Right.
Right.
We didn't talk about interior other than...
And he's gonna need some type of steer, some type of fire door that he can't get, I mean, there is an opening right now, and I think it's probably a thirty or thirty-six inch door between that building and that back part. So it should probably be locked from the inside, where you can't get in from that storage. That's all. We can write that out, I would think. But if you wanted to take a peek at it, if there's any changes, then we let you know.
Well, is that something that could be done within the next week, and, um...
I would say yes. It needs to be done within the next week.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if, if we're asking for shelving and stuff like that, that's probably gonna be us to do later, whatever.
I just didn't know.
No, I understand.
I think if they're demoing, building, making demo carpet, leave it as a studded room for all.
Right.
I'm just saying, if it, if they're demoing some of the building, we say demoed and lighting in, and it's the studs, and that's better than having to pull off paneling ourselves or walking across carpet if you're, just my opinion, but...
I don't know.
I don't, I don't know.
It's not that bad that you could just leave it as it is, is what you're saying.
Yeah, it's fine the way it is.
Okay. On the interior.
For storage.
So we're talking roofing, garage door.
I'll make a motion for you to move forward with that one, Ian.
Okay. So I have a move forward with an MOU with EDC for the refurbishment of, and restoration of one thirty-eight North Second Street in conjunction with the awarded ready grant funding, and that upon completion of renovations, that ownership would be transferred to Economic Development Corporation, um, with partial consideration, their, their participation with the Ready Grant Administration, and, um, additional consideration for repairs to the back building portion roof, um, lighting for the garage, and a garage door to be added on the exterior side, and a garage door between the interior of the main structure. And then, um, full, the city would transfer full ownership of the building with reversion of the use in a long, in a long-term lease, um, of that back portion. And then in the event that EDC would ever, um, basically just stand or not function within that building, they would have a need to offer that back to the city for a dollar. Is there anything that I'm missing out of that expansion? Well, it's not written yet. It's not written yet.
And just so the media knows, the reason that we received those ready funds is because of the partnership between the city and economic development on this project. If we, this building wouldn't have been transferred to economic development, we wouldn't have received the two hundred and, was it ninety? Two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That's why we received the funds, so.
It's all shored up now.
It's sure, yeah.
Craig, we need to make, secure, what were you meaning by that?
No, I was just wanting, between that garage area and there, they're gonna want some way to, yeah, get out, you know.
Gotcha. Okay.
But because of the partnership, that's why we were allowed to get these ready funds.
Yeah, we, the city on its own...
We wouldn't have gotten them, right. Okay. Any more, is that a, is that a motion?
Yes.
Motion second, on paper?
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Okay. Coach, do you have anything else?
Oh, did Jeremy want to announce the community crossing? Jeremy, you want to announce the community crossing?
Yeah, last, um, Friday, I felt natural to make a trip in Mulholland. Uh, we were meeting with the governor and some of other communities in northeast Indiana. And as you know, uh, back in July, we applied for another round of community crossing. It was funding for, uh, building a resurface and handicap grant improvement. We were awarded eight hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and ten cents for a total estimated construction of one million, thirteen thousand, one thirty-five twelve. Um, we'll take care of nine streets, which is roughly about thirty blocks, come by the back, segments of blocks. Uh, new handicap ramps, uh, building a resurface. And as you will see, I don't have a list printed off of the nine streets, uh, to hand out, but, um, you will see a connection with what we're doing compared to what we completed over the last few years, and what will be completed in twenty-three and twenty-four here. Um, it's a great program. I joke with the governor, see if I can endorse that jet in front of the bank before we cut Mulholland.
The big, oversized ones?
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Had to be, eight hundred and some thousand. But very good, um, program. Happy that you guys are still supporting that program. It's written on all through twenty-four. So hopefully, with some encouragement through the local areas, after I act, that I'm sure it's gonna be up for work again, but hopefully do continue. Um, we paid areas the last two or three years that haven't been paid in thirty-five years.
Right.
Now we would never be able to even... Now we would never be able to even consider doing, look out for additional funding.
Yep.
Mom and I are gonna ask and maybe even remember, is this a vibe or is this?
I think it might be sick. I gotta look back.
How many years it's been going on?
No, no, no.
I think we've been sick.
And it was 80% of, we've had almost $5 million of this stuff.
Just from that. And then you split 25% natural profit.
Yeah. Our part was about 200, 230, 250, somewhere in there.
You know, some.
Per year.
Only got 100, 135, all left a million. You paid 1,000, 1,000 more.
Been a great program.
Very much so. They put on a nice short presentation of Holbash, the theater. Recognize everyone and hopefully we can continue like Phil and I talked yesterday. Yep. We're very, very fortunate, man. Got a route or so, I just won't be setting really real well. You know, maybe we choose to go another route.
Right.
So. It's all connectivity. That's what we've been doing with this program. It's not like we're just jumping all over this and jump all over it. It all has a rivalry.
Makes a difference.
What else happened? And it not teaches you asset management. Um, they throw a lot of things called mix of fixes. You don't focus on just paving. You don't focus on just crack seal because if you focus just on paving, that's all you, that's all you're gonna do because you're not seeing a lot of other streets. Um, you're just dumping all your money into one thing. We've been very fortunate. Guess this money's available and a bunch of money in that helps us. To be able to get this up.
Please have a check on your population.
Yeah, as long as we're down below that 10,000, which should be until the next census. And they keep running the program. You know, you're gonna continue to be the subject. You know, you get above 10,000, it gets a bit, it gets a little bit different, yeah.
Absolutely.
Right, doubles our price.
Doesn't seem like a lot, but your nine's gonna go over half.
Right.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Yep.
That, so that program was, obviously it was Governor Holcomb's program. It's been a great program and it's been focused on small to mid-sized communities. There's, there's a lot of bigger cities that are upset and they're fighting against it because no matter your city size, you can only get a million dollars. Well, if DeCader gets the same size as South Bend, you can imagine they're not very happy about it. So I'm glad that Jeremy's tried to jump on every cycle that we could because the next governor, he may not be focused on cities as much as Governor Holcomb has. He may be focused on big business and doesn't care about the cities.
So that's why there's one person running for governor that is interested in small cities.
Right, right. So this is, uh, it's been a great agreement. We've taken advantage of it, so that's great. And we'll see what happens in the next, you know, administration.
And they can all talk.
Right.
Then we'll see where.
At least the talk's going on.
I thought election day was yesterday, guys. We're still talking about politics. Never ends. For some, it never.
We're already looking ahead.
Bigger elections next year.
And at some point, when we don't have plenty of things on the agenda, I do have a book program that's a management plan that we are required to do that shows you exactly where you stack them against your neighborhood communities or even the bigger community. Or the money that you put forward. I think you're gonna be really impressed with what we've been able to achieve in the last five or six years.
Right, right, yeah. We've received it a bunch of times, for sure. Okay. Anything else, Ian? Department heads, Jeremy, anything else?
We've collections in full swing. We've had some hard times with big collection. We have, we have two machines total, one without less than a day. And it's now laid back into rotation and and put, so we're working out what we can have. Things are going well though. So I guess we really want to encourage people to use their time and, you know, nicer days like today, if you have leaves, guardways must not get it out, take that before it really starts raining and smelling and.
Right. If you wait till you see them go by to get them off, it's probably gonna be another week before they're back. So get them off.
Right now, yes, because we're getting in on the hard of.
Right, right. Kevin Gerber?
Uh, I was just gonna talk about the Stratton Trickery. Seems like that was a good idea to make that a one-way around that. I would say just toughen the back of your mind, build bike them in and ask for that again next year. After talking with the officer out there, maybe make just some minor adjustments to what, you know, the flow they had created, but it sounds like things went way, way better. A lot less chaos, just a long course, never in good direction.
Good. I would say it ran well. I was there personally, so. For the, the amount of crowd, people. I was also very impressed that the number of adults that accompanied the kids. It wasn't just kids running around.
They had bags too.
There were adults with everything.
Adults had bags too.
So that was a positive too.
Jeff?
Uh, we are approximately halfway through all the four graders in Adams County with the survival of our families. About a week left.
I don't know if this is the time. I, we need to give a little shout out to, um, a retiree on the, on the part-time status. Um, Tim Omen is officially retiring from the paid-on-call after 25 years of service. You know, it's, people don't realize how much work these part-time on-call, whatever you wanna call them, volunteer firemen, uh, how much work and effort they put out and how much they're risking their own lives every time. You know, we just had a major fire recently and these guys don't even think about it. They run right to it. Um, Tim Omen's been there for, what is it, 25 years? And I don't think he's missed too much action in the last 25 years. He was always one to show up. You know, you gotta, thank God for the guys that have their own businesses or have a place in an employer that allows them to leave. But those guys are very much needed when, when we have a fire. So I want to say a special thank you to Tim Omen for all the work he's done and all the lives he's saved and been a part, you know, with that whole team, the full-time and the volunteers. Anything else, Jeff? Kirk? Carrie?
Uh, we are in the process of reading the infrastructure department and the food department and cleaning out. We have two of the three aeration tanks that we have to clean. It's been quite a difficult job.
Is there anywhere on the black market for that stuff?
No, well, I was asking Jay. I'm like, what's all this stuff that you guys are pulling around? Hair.
That's where it went.
My hair.
I was wondering. John, what happened?
Um, it'll be, uh, Bush residents getting a letter, uh, probably next week. We're going to, I mentioned a few months ago, we're gonna be changing, uh, about 700 people when they get their bill, when their bills due. Um, we need to change around some of our, the way our routes are red and the way we bill, we got some parts that are growing. Very much so, and some that are pretty much landlocked, their, their size is gonna stay the same. So to keep our rates with postal service, I'm gonna rearrange a lot of the town to get it so that way it evens out, we bill them out each time every month. And also the more people that sign up for the email bills, which is a good thing, but the more people that do that, the more we get risked and we're gonna have to push the green. We're gonna move around seven or eight hundred of them. Pretty much everybody, their bill, this won't take effect till January, so I'll give everybody a letter this month, another one next month, let them know. But yeah, so we need a letter, that's what it is. Supposedly everybody's bill will go back by next. Shouldn't be the interruption, it shouldn't affect anybody's bill or precise.
Okay. And from council. We have a couple guests here and I want to welcome them, um, to the team here in a little while, so congratulations on your elections. We'll look forward to working with you starting in January. So thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Anything from anywhere else, public?
Make a motion to pay your claims.
I'll second.
Motion second, on paper?
Aye.
Pull the same sign?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion second, on paper?
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Okay.